Pastor Dee from the next level ministries to come up and say an opening prayer.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So Father, in the name of Jesus, Lord, I just bless you and praise you and thank you for this opportunity to open up in prayer for such a time as this. Lord, I thank you for everything that will be said here, Lord, that you're, that you will be the center of all things, Lord, in this, in this building. I thank you, Father God, that every heart and every mind is prepared to not only hear, but to receive what you are saying to us and through your people today. I thank you, Father God, that everything is done decently and in order. I thank you for every petition that is coming before this commission. Lord, that it would not only be heard, but that your will be done. So I just pray to your kingdom, come, your will be done in everything that is said and done here in Jesus's name. Amen?
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Dee.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today we will hear from our Sheriff Derek Cunningham, Finance Director Cheryl Thomas, Assistant Director from Community Corrections Monica Harris, Terry Reynolds from Levitate Legal, and Director of Development for Legal Services of Alabama Felicia Petway. The items you will hear during the formal session is an hourly contract with Levitate Legal and Consulting, rental agreement with the Montgomery Performing Arts Center, a change in active employee, single and family benefit plan rates, amendment number three to a contract with outdoor obsessions, consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies, consider miscellaneous appropriations to education.
Have one on that. Florence, 2,500 to Capitol Heights Middle School Cheerleaders.
I have one Florence. 750 to Cotoma. Alomary School.
I'd like to remind everybody that the budget for the fiscal year 2324 ends September 30th, so we have one more meeting for the education balances.
So you're telling us to go ahead and spend all our money?
Well, just either that or it goes right back into the MP, it goes back into the education. Yeah, so if you want to allocate it, you have one more meeting. And we all have balances left there with a couple of agency balances, but not much.
Yeah, the same is true with the agency.
Yeah.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
We do have a couple of requests from the joint. The balance in the joint is around $27,000. We have two requests today. Kid One Transport Systems requesting 8,000 to transport children and expected mothers to medical care. This started in 2019. We've given 8,000 from the joint every year since 2019. Is there a consideration for that one? Is there any objection to us doing that one again? From the joint Florence, we add that one. Landmarks Foundation is, has never received funding from appropriations. They've received the budget five year, 5,000 per year in the budget. They're requesting 10,000 for a new program they're doing this year at Old Alabama Town, Scarecrows on Parade. They're requesting 10,000. Any comments or? For five, yeah.
So you're saying you don't want to give them anything for this request? I've helped Landmarks before and they are really doing some good things and want to start doing more community wi, I mean, they've always done a lot of community-wide things. And like you said, they've never asked us for additional funding, so I don't mind assisting with this.
I'm just wondering, Mr. Chairman, how does that particular program, I think I understand their overall function, but how does that particular program enhance the quality of life and culture enrichment when it comes to the county as a whole? That would be my objection. It just seems like another program that they're doing that has no real cultural significance in terms of the overall county.
Yeah, we all got the same information that I got here. It's a free, family-friendly event to transform a historic town to a captivating autumn festival. Guests can stroll through Old Alabama Town. It's in the package that everybody has.
I've read it. I wasn't impressed. I, I think they're already in the budget, like I said, for.
Mr. Chairman, I would, well, first I would respond to Commissioner Sankey and how does it help? I would say it helps in the same way a New Year's Day parade helps the overall enjoyment of the residents of Montgomery County, but perhaps we could do 5,000 from the joint.
Any objections to doing 5,000 from the joint?
I, I think they're already in the budget for 5,000. That's.
All right, well, that's.
I don't think we should start adding to what we give them already.
Anybody individually want to give from their own?
Well, do we have, do we have, can we put it up for a vote on the, and not dismiss it out of hand? Can we just see if we have support for it for five out of the joint?
I don't mean to be argumentative this morning, but it's interesting that when we, you know, have these type of discussions, that we don't have a real protocol or, or standard of, of practice when it comes to whether or not we decide to fund. So I don't know why this morning has to be any different. Why should we put it up for a vote this morning when there have been so many others who've come and we have not?
We can vote today anyway because we're not in a voting session, formal voting session. We can put it on the next agenda that'll be voted on next two weeks from now, then we can vote on it at that time. So if you would just add it to the 5,000 from the joint and then we will vote two weeks from now to, just like we do for all the other ones on here to approve them.
Vote on what?
Well, it'll be on the.
Vote on what, though?
Given 5,000 from the joint, it'd be like all other appropriations, the education, the agency, the designated, we'll vote on that. We have to prove it.
I mean, I've heard, I've heard, I mean, there, there's no consensus to do anything with this. I mean, there's two to one so far.
Does anyone else, does anyone else support this proposal?
Any oppositions to it? And, and two of us opposed it.
Right, and I just asked if anyone, if we had enough consensus for it. Well, thank you.
Commission Harris, we can just put it on the, like we do everything else, put it up there for a vote. That's not a.
No, no, we don't do everything else like that. We, there has to be some kind of consensus on what we put on, on the agenda. No, no one commissioner controls the agenda.
Well, we've had in the past, I do recall in the past, we've had appropriations out there and when it came time to vote, we said, okay, we want to separate this particular one from the other ones. I don't think we have any other appropriate, well, we do have one. We'll have the Kids One Transport and we'd have Landmark on the same, where we could separate them. We've done that in the past, separate them on that vote in the formal session.
We've all agreed to put.
Normally we agree.
There was no opposition to Kid One. There was no opposition to Kid One. But there's, there's opposition to funding some festival that, for the first time, that may or may not do something that I don't know anything about. And, and, and one of, one commissioner questions the cultural relevance of it to the majority of the people in the county or to a significant portion of the people in the county. And I oppose it because we've already, we, we already give them money and to start, this, this won't be the first year that we have to entertain this request. So, I mean, if we're going to put something on the agenda, and that's the other thing, no one commissioner, not even you, Mr. Chairman, controls the agenda of this, of this commission. So there has to be at least consensus on, on what goes on that agenda and what doesn't.
All right, just to make things simple, Commissioner Walker, would you want to do it from your individual?
I was, my question was, does anybody else support, am I the only one that supports this? And if I'm the only one that supports this, then certainly we wouldn't move it forward. But I just wanted to verify that I'm the only one that supports this.
No, I support it too. I mean, it's 5,000. And I support it to the, I mean, I said, yeah, I mean, I, I support it to the point that this may be one of those that we just do individually.
Did you want to go on record, Commissioner Walker, did you want to go on record with the comments you just made?
Well, that's what Commissioner Harris said, that didn't have any cultural relevance for the majority of the population of Montgomery County.
And your interpretation of that was?
No.
That it doesn't, well, yeah, we're going to move on. So we can skip it, Doug.
Let's just skip it. But Commissioner Walker, if you want to help them, I'd be glad to help too.
All right.
I think we just make it an individual thing and, and let it go from.
Many a time, so that's not a, that's not a first time. So just, let's hold it off for right now.
Yes, sir. So we will only add $8,000 from joint for Kids One Transport. We will consider travel training requests for engineering, grants, probate, parks and recreation, and risk management. Now we will hear from Sheriff Cunningham. He's here to discuss a grant application to a DECA.
Well, good morning, everybody. And, yeah, I'm here to talk about the, the grant for, that we're doing with a DECA. This, that's a collaborative effort, not only just us. We got the Police Department, the DA's office, CareStar, all of them are built into this grant application that we're doing. It does not have a match. And what we're looking for, had some discussions with Commissioner Walker about some cameras. So all that is built into this grant opportunity that we're going after to help on some violence prevention.
Sheriff, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Did you have any more specifics about it? I mean, I think it's, certainly if it's a million dollars out there, that's great.
Yeah.
Did you have any more details about how the funds might be used other than what Commissioner Walker talked about?
Yeah. I can be, I'm more than happy to tell you. Well, you're looking at, CareStar is going to add another team, a response team to come out for people that are in crisis, that are in need of assistance. So we're building money in for that. The DA's office is building money in. Right now, us, the Police Department, both have Axon body camera systems. And this will entail the, allow them to be able to get the Axon software so they can be able to transcribe and all of that stuff, which will help speed up their process of being able to get videos and things of this nature. So that's what the DA's office is looking at. We're looking at some software as well as expanding some cameras throughout the county as well, so.
Any other questions? That'd be next agenda.
Do you need to waive rules on this?
I'm sure, no, I don't think so. Yeah, yeah, we got time.
Thank you, Sheriff. I think that's all you got, right?
Oh, that's it. I got, nice. Y'all, y'all's not got comfortable up here.
Finance Director has several items to present.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first thing on page five, I believe, is operating budget for 2425. I think you've got that sheet and then you've got one for the construction budget. On the operating budget, it's 149 million with all the funds compared to 144 million last year or '24. Revenues are 148 million. There's about a million coming from fund balance, which is from road and bridge, not from the general fund. The general fund is balanced. It's up 108 million compared to 102 for 2024. Basically, the expenditures that include that increase are all, just about all payroll-related. There's a pay plan increase for public safety and corrections. It was approved back in June. We had to go ahead and approve that one because it took some computation to get it in the budget. And I don't know if Wes is here, but thank very much to Wes Richardson with the Sheriff's Department for working on those pay plans. It was a big help to me to get that done and help get them in there. And then for the Administrative Service Maintenance Pay Plan, we have a 3% increase in that one, all effective October 1. There was a pretty big increase in retirement percentages and it basically is stemming from the, the commission approving the Tier One retirement benefits to Tier Two employees. So everyone has the same benefits.
When's that, when's that effective, Cheryl? I thought that had already gone into effect.
It did. It did go into effect a year ago, but this, it, it took a while for the, the, the percentage to go up. So there was just a, I mean, overall, the percentage increase, it was about, dollar-wise, it was about 700,000 in this budget because it just has a domino effect as far as getting the full in there. And, but that was a good thing because we have everybody on the same now, very good benefit.
Yes.
And, and then the 25 budget also includes funding a merit for employees. That's a 3% based on performance and approved by the supervisor, but the funding for that is in there. And then the other is just operational. As we all know, everything's gone up. And so we did have to increase some operating budgets, you know, to cover that. And the sales tax and ad valorem revenue increases are the main thing that have provided the funds to cover those. That's operating budget. Construction budget, we've budgeted a transfer from the general fund of 1.6 million, a couple of projects specific, but it really is just to fund ongoing maintenance as needed and, you know, put those funds over there. So on those, is there any questions on those?
Cheryl, excuse me, I know you do a great job and we talk a lot in our budget hearings, but I was just looking at something in terms of the risk, risk management department, public affairs and grants. Those dollar amounts, salary and what else? For instance, grants, about 771,902 dollars. Help me understand that particular item too.
You're talking about? Oh, all right, the grant fund?
Yes, in the general budget.
Are you asking about the grant fund or the department?
Did I, did I read that correctly? The, the total dollar amount for that department is 771,000?
The budget amount for the grants department is on page nine, right at the top.
Yeah. I think this, is the 771? I got to line it. I think that's the Finance Department.
It is.
Yeah, I thought, okay.
It is. I saw that.
Yeah, the Grants Department is 134.
Right.
Which, yeah, the Finance Department, that's, you know, we have seven employees. Yeah, and I, of course, I'm having to hold my paper away to look at.
Now, wait a minute. County Commission, Risk Management, Public Affairs, Grants. You go down four, and you go down four, well, here it is 771.
Well, one, two, three, four. I'm looking.
I saw it. I mean, I'm trying to find it now, but I remember looking at.
Well, the grant says 134, one, two.
And it was 700.
Well, it's the general, oh, okay, so the ca, okay, you're right, because the general, County Commission is 1.8.
Yes.
That's the top one. That's what, it drops down one.
Yes.
Right.
Regina's making good, good salary there for Regina.
All right.
That was not my, my question. I just thought maybe we had some additional plans.
Yeah, that would have been pretty big for a one-person operation without grants being in there. Any other questions on the budget?
I apologize. I did, I have some notes, but I didn't put the page number. There were, for economic tourism development, 400,000. Who does that, who handles that and what is that for?
What, you don't know what page that is on?
It's on page nine.
I think that's, that's, we, we started to reduce that and then, and then we changed it. We started to reduce that by 250?
Well, no, some of that, that 400,000, I believe, is some incentives. I can't remember specifically, but that's where we try to budget. We even have the streetlights, for instance. We pay the streetlights for Hundy. It's in there. And then there's some built-in economic incentives that we, we have an obligation to do for several years. I'd have to look back at the detail, but that's what that is.
All right.
One other question.
I have to think of who else is in there.
Now, is this a different category, Cheryl, a, a new category, other economic tourism?
Yes, that is a reserve because we reduced another budget and we reserved that amount. It's not line-specific for anybody.
All right, that's.
It's not line-specific for anyone. We just reserved that amount for your use.
And that's because of?
If needed.
The deduction that we did on the other end to the other, okay, all right, thank you.
It was just kind of a, like I said, to have a reserve and not take it out of the budget.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Cheryl, if there's nothing else, I'd just like to express my appreciation, and I'm sure, I'm speaking for the entire commission, my appreciation of the efforts of you and your staff to really take care of the finances of Montgomery County and to, to come up with this budget. I know that this work is difficult and, and, and even more difficult than that is to find somebody to replace you when you leave here. So on behalf of the commission, I would really like to thank you and your staff for, for the, the hard work and dedication that you put in to Montgomery, the people of Montgomery County. We, it's difficult. I know you get paid for, you get a salary, but it's not enough. I know it's not enough. And thank you so much.
Oh, I appreciate those comments. It is a very special budget because it is my last. It's my 16th budget.
Sadly for me.
Well, thank you.
So that'd be next agenda.
Wait, stay right there Cheryl. Let me capture your last budget presentation.
Thanks. All right, I got a couple of other things on there.
Go ahead.
The, I think the next one is the Gatsby. Is that right?
Yes.
Well, we already, I went over the construction. And then it's the, did that, it's the Gatsby 54. This is a required, to be presented and voted for every year where we commit the fund balance. It's not a cost associated with it. It's just for classification on the financials. And in, Commissioner Sankey, I hope you noticed that we have the reserve for 8.5 million. So this is, the commission will vote on that to commit those funds. And the only re, only way you can uncommit them is to vote again.
So that'd be next agenda.
And the last item, it's in the budget already, but it's just to formally present the administrative and service maintenance pay plans to, you know, to adjust them, increase them 3% for you to vote and then a vote of personnel. I think that's it.
That'd be next agenda. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thanks.
Monica Harris is here to discuss a waived rule item number one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am requested to fill the administrative assistant position at a pay grade AO5 Step 9. This candidate for this position has over 20 years of experience. She's administrative and also has financial experience, including payroll and budgeting. And is currently a Montgomery County employee with the knowledge of the county financial software. There is no impact to the budget because this previous administrative assistant was at a AO5 Step 9. And I'm asking rules to be waived.
Any questions?
No objection.
No objection to waiving rules? Any objection?
No objection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll hear from Terry Reynolds with Levitate regarding item number six.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Excuse me, this is a resolution for the Sheriff's Office to allow for the purchase of SIM cards to complete the camera surveillance, countywide camera surveillance network.
Now I'm confused.
Yes.
My, I, I mean, I, I might have had the wrong understanding, but I thought that we could use some of the, was that $2 million grant for cameras?
No, this is totally separate. This is on the Fuchsia system. It is never purchased.
This is the one, the 1.5 million that you guys allocated and obligated to expand the countywide camera surveillance network in the unincorporated areas of the county. So there is a need for SIM cards to go into those cameras to keep, Sheriff, correct me if I'm wrong.
So you were talking about body cameras, Sheriff?
Well, we were talking about the, the expansion of our software for the DA's office. That's totally separate. This, this right here is what we did with the Harper Funds, with Alabama Power, Fuchas, and we knew that was going to come up short because when we did the bid, it didn't, we didn't specify for the SIMs to be able to match up. So we, we knew this going into this.
I'm, I'm, but, but you said it would, it would help. My understanding is the SIM card is going to, going to accommodate better communications between the camera system with the city and the county. And I think you said some of the same thing.
No, that's, that's, this is, what we were talking about is bringing the DA's office under, to be able to get access to our camera footages.
That's body camera.
Yeah, body cameras.
Oh, you, so it's, yeah, bodies, body cameras and, and the ones we're going to put up.
We're talking about videos.
I got you, I got you.
So, Sheriff, excuse me, sir. So that million dollars, a part of that could not go toward the SIMs card is not, you can't consider that crime?
All that's part of it, but the problem was, this part here, we came up on a shortfall on paying for all of that. We knew that we may come up short after the bid and everything. And by the time that we got everything worked out, I know it was coming to an end of life as far as working with Levitate. So what we're saying is now we need to go ahead and, and finish paying Alabama Power so they can go ahead and complete doing their process.
With opera money?
Yeah.
Which, which leads me to ask another question, Sheriff, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, yeah.
I'm concerned about the balance. How, how much money, I mean, you, you answered that question last time. It was related to a totally different set of circumstances. Again, you don't have to give the information today, but I would love to know, what is the fund balance? What, what we funded already and what do we really, really have left in opera money? Because it seems like we're creating more opportunities to spend opera money and I thought we had allocated all of it. So that's nothing to do with what you're talking about. Well, no more questions for you, Sheriff, about that. But I'm just concerned that because we have, we have Levitate wanting to extend their contract on an hourly basis. That's opera-funded. You wanted additional.
Now, my main additional one is to complete what we called the bid.
Yes, sir.
You know, that's why the two grants are getting confused now. That, that other stuff is where it adapted. This is not where that, this is where Harper Funds, this is us completing the bid out, putting in the cameras that we're putting in to open up that crime center. So this is nothing to do with.
Yes, sir. But, but a little bit more than what we had allocated from opera?
Oh, we do that coming into it. We, we gave that, that presentation. We said we may have to come back to complete this. And once the power company got finished with their stuff and the Fuchsia system that we were getting and all the other hardware equipment, then we came back and we realized that we had to upgrade or finish out with the SIM card piece, which came out to that 120-something thousand dollars.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Sankey, and this for you and for the other commissioners, the funds are there and I would be happy to sit down with, with folks to go through where we are after the budget passes. We're going to get with Cheryl and do some reconciliation to, on the refined numbers down to the penny. But tho, those. But tho, those funds are there, and ha, happy to discuss that with you.
May I ask another question, Mr. Jim? So, in, in terms of, of the proposal, um, that's before us today regarding the extension of your Levitate services, what, if you don't mind, thank you for, you know, allowing me to do this at this point in time, what would you be doing this? Is anything different with extension, uh, compared to what is currently in the contract that you all have in terms of, you know, giving us advice on the funding and so forth, and putting together RFPs?
Sure, so, where we are, Commissioner, and that's an excellent question, there are a few things that need to happen on each of your individual remaining funds. For example, your contracts are done, we're waiting for affidavits from your awardees. Um, and so we've got those small things that need to be handled. We have, all of the data is in a share file, so the bulk of our work is complete. The only other thing that's out there that I think we really need to complete is working with Ms. Thomas to make sure that we have our dollars and cents reconcile. I expect, and you never know how these things will go, but that there will be a period towards the end of the year where there, there won't be much for us to do, and you guys won't be receiving a bill for us. But the reason that, that we are requesting you to keep us on through January thirty-first is because that final report is due of all of your obligations, and Ms. Thomas will be gone. And so we want to make sure that we, that will be a, a big lift. And we know we're gonna have a big absence of knowledge with her being gone, and so to the best of our ability, we want to be in place to support whoever is tasked with completing those reports. And that's really the big outstanding thing.
So, I shouldn't be worried about the beneficiary agreements that I'm trying to get completed and so forth?
So, no, sir, so your, your numbers changed at the last meeting, so at the la, at your last county commission meeting, we got the final numbers from your awardees, as I understand it. Those contracts are complete, the only thing that we're missing are affidavits. So we require any beneficiary that has a negative economic impact to attest to that in an affidavit, and that is the only thing that's outstanding. And once those are received from them, and Susan and Allison expect those this week, then the county will be in a position to execute those agreements.
And if your contract was not extended, I still would not have to be concerned about whether or not you would be providing service to make sure that we complete, uh-
No, sir, um, I love what I do, but unfortunately, we're not in a position to volunteer for it.
Yeah, so even, so even, so through no, no, through no fault of the beneficiaries, through no fault of mine, we still couldn't, I'm just asking a question, I'm not trying to get you to do anything for free, I respect your, uh, the, the service that you provide, and the education that you have and your experience, but I just wanna be sure. So through no fault of the beneficiaries, through no fault of mine, even though we have not gotten down to the, where the money has exchanged hands, you're saying to me that if this contract not extended, then you don't have any further obligations to the county?
No, well, so what, what I would be willing to in kind is as much as I can to help get you guys over the finish line. We are invested in this with you guys, we've been here with you from the start. But we cannot in kind the amounts of time that we have been putting into this. And there are a lot of phone calls and a lot of exchanges that, that you guys don't see, and that's intentional, because we wanna take that burden off of you and your staff. So, uh, we would never leave Florence and Kendall and Cheryl hanging, I think yours are right across the finish line. Those contracts are done, once they sign the affidavit, it'd be fine. You know, there's some other things that are out there that are done. So I think we could help in the last couple of weeks, but yes, there would be a very hard kind of cutoff where you guys would, would be on your own.
But we are voting in the former session, hourly rate to retain for this type of situation.
Yes, and we, we'd love to keep working with you, and I think you'll find our hourly rate is, um, much lower than most, most attorneys in the area. So we did offer a discount in that rate, um, as well for you guys.
And one last question, thank you so much for your patience.
Why be keeping hubbub here long more than we keep people that we donate money to? We don't ask this many questions to the folks we make it rain on with donation money. So I'm just trying to figure out what we doing toward Ms., and now, and listen, I have no problem with you asking questions, so I'm sorry, I shouldn't interrupt you, because I try not to interrupt one of my county commissioners. But it just seems to me that we don't have, ask this many questions to folks that's coming up here, asking us for money for organ, the things that we don't see in organizations, we don't see the work actually done. But for a person that we see that's working for us, that's also a small minority business owner, we're asking this many questions. It just bothers me, and I have to say that, and go on the record, it bothers me. I guess being a woman, and I understand being a female and being a minority business owner, it just bothers me that we are drilling her about an hourly contract, when we got some people around here that's making triple, double, and we don't even see them here, sitting in here in front of us.
Well, she's gonna be, well, after we vote in the-
I'm just trying to be, not to be rude, uh, with my fellow commissioner, are you finished? If, I just wanted to make sure your comments were-
I got my point across.
Yeah, but I, maybe, maybe so, but I, I'm, I'm certain that Ms. Reynolds does not have any problem with the questions, would you, I'm just asking for clarification.
I didn't say she had any problems, so let's go back on the record with that, since you came back with that one. I didn't say she had any problems, I said me, Commissioner Carmore hyphen Ziegler had the problem with that. So let's go back on the record with that one.
And again, at ten o'clock in our former session, the first, the second thing, the new, first thing on new business is, are we going into a hourly rate contract with them to handle this type of situation? So we'll know at ten oh five whether-
Yes, ma'am.
She will be around or not.
Yes.
And that has impacted-
And, and I appreciate you for saying that, because we, we just gave you kudos for being your leadership, and now we questioning your leadership.
And the amount of compliant money depends on how the individual commissioner's money is spent.
Right, and thank you all for, for indulging me, I mean, I think these are intelligent questions, I don't think we're intending to offend anybody or overly scrutinize anyone, uh, yeah. But in any event, Commissioner, uh, Ziegler has caused me to forget my next question, it was gonna be, it was gonna be my final question for now, but so-
We'll come back.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Reynolds.
Next agenda for the resolution, uh, to obligate additional American Rescue Act funding to support improvement to the county's camera infrastructure, so.
We have some more items to be considered. There's a contract with the Jones Group for Governmental Relations Services.
What number is that?
Number seven.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Did you negotiate this?
No, sir, I did not, uh, they brought this to us. They're asking for an increase.
A twenty percent increase?
They were asking.
They had, they, they took, nothing different.
No, they just asked for an increase.
Now-
Asked for us to decide.
I mean, I, I read the contract, the entire contract, and nowhere in that contract does it require, uh, uh, periodic reports on the activities and actions that they take or perform on behalf of the county. I haven't received any or seen any, I see a newsletter that we get weekly or monthly, I forget what that is, but I'm trying to justify a twenty percent increase with no increase in, in services for just one year. For, on a one-year contract, I, and just have, have real problem with that, I think we need to, this is something that needs to be discussed.
That's, that's why we're discussing it right now.
I'm talking about with them, I mean, they should be here, to, I mean, you just don't ask for a twenty percent, uh, increase and not show up.
Is anybody here from the Jones Group? I don't see anybody.
When was the last time we had anyone here from the Jones Group?
Laurie was here last meeting.
Yeah, they normally hear, somebody's here normally at just about every meeting.
Well, I mean, they're here enough to, to, to have come to us and talk to us about requesting a twenty percent increase on this contract, than have it show up on this information agenda.
My, my recommendation is that we keep them where they're at, that there be no increase.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm willing to hear, hear from them, but I, I mean, I'm inclined to agree with you, but I'm willing to hear from them.
When is their contract, uh, in Florence, it has to be pretty soon.
The end of September.
End of September. Oh, you did not? Yeah, they didn't come, they came a little late.
I mean, this is no way to do it, this is no way to request an increase, it really isn't.
I was pleased with the work they did during the session, they're very involved in the session.
There's no question about that, whether or not they're, they did a hundred thousand dollars worth of work, but-
I'm okay with keeping them where they're neutral, like they are in the budget, with no increase.
Mr. Jim, I had acts of, I had some similar concerns, actually. I spoke with, uh, Kendall and Florence about it, and I thought that they might be here to at least answer some questions about, uh, the extent of their work and whether or not they were doing anything in addition to, uh, what was contained in the previous contract. So I was concerned as well.
Well, we can, um, I would make a motion that we move it forward at neutral where they are now, no increase, and then allow them to come, if they wanna come to the next meeting, they're more than welcome, but we need to get this contract done, because we, it ends in September.
So are you saying that you would like for a contract to be on the next agenda with no increase?
Yes, ma'am. Is there any objection to that, Commissioner Harris?
No, I don't have any.
You have a problem with that?
Well, I mean, what, what was it, them or not a judge?
Uh, put on the next agenda the contract to remain neutral, no increase.
I mean, I, we can do that, but I, like I said, I'm, I'm open to a discussion, and I think, because I think, really think that that's the way it should, should have happened.
Well, Florence, if we lit, we put on the next agenda at no increase, renew the contract for one year, ask them to come if they wanna speak, and, and that they can sell us on why an increase is warranted, then we can change that during the information session, correct?
Yes.
All right, well, let's do that, let's leave them at where they are now, just renewing the contract, no increase, and we'll allow them, if they wanna come and, and present a case, then we'll be allowed to listen to them.
Items number eight and nine are coming from risk management. Number eight's a scope of work and proposal from Jacobs Engineering Group for the Downtown Environmental Alliance Assessment Project. Melissa's here, if you have any questions.
Be next agenda.
Item number nine is the Professional Services Agreement Renewal with NAF Care for On-Site Inmate Health, Healthcare Services.
Melissa, yeah, we still getting our dollar value for that, or it seems like quite a bit of money we're spending?
May I have her?
Sure. Sound like an attorney, ma'am.
Good morning, commissioners. Yeah, and the sheriff is here, he can also attest to the great things that we're trying to do in detention facility. Um, I gave you some statistics about, uh, the population and the staff. Now, one thing that we need to look at when we're looking at this number is there are twenty-five people on sta, that NAF Care has on staff for this infirmary. Um, and it takes every bit of that time to treat the number of inmates that we have detained. How, over half of them are working twelve-hour shifts, they, you know, work nights, weekends, you know, they're nurses, so they have the shift differentials and, and things like that. So most of this amount is for salary. If we were, you know, if we were to try to do the operation ourselves, which I would not recommend, you know, we would probably be spending about this amount in salaries, supplies, medical equipment, et cetera, et cetera. So I feel like that we are definitely getting the benefit of this contract. Now, I think next year, we did talk about doing an RFP, see if there are other providers out there, you know, that can, um, provide similar or maybe some other services that, that we need, and, and look at the price then. But, um, we have minimal, we, we've had minimal issues with the care NAF Care gives.
I, I really, Sheriff, Sheriff, are you, are you satisfied and happy with what you're getting up there for this contract?
I'm very happy with them, because I look at where we came from and where we're at today. I mean, knock on wood, they, they're there.
I, I remember where we were.
Yeah.
And, and, and Melissa, you, you really, I remember, you sold this to us, when we, it was, it was a large amount when you sold it to us, and you sold it to us then, we were on the, on the borderline for accreditation, they brought back the accreditation, uh, and, and, I mean, I, I don't wanna get locked up, but those guys get a lot of good service, they get dental and health, and we, and we, we're mandated to do that, we have to do it. Otherwise, we'd look at another lawsuit.
I, I keep the manual close by, so that I can look at the standards.
So I think, I think at this point, it's probably, it's well worth what we're getting, uh, and, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Yeah, and you, you're saying there's no concern about the quality or the standards of care that the inmates receive? Everybody's being seen, timed, and mannered, all the healthcare needs are being addressed.
And everything is documented, I mean, we don't have the slip-ups and the mistakes. Everything they do is documented, and everything is in their system. We get a complaint from a family member, it's loaded into the system, they follow up on it. I mean, it takes, uh, it frees our hands on a lot of issues that we used to have to deal with, now we don't deal with.
So that'll be next agenda.
Item number ten is a contract to renew, a renewal of a contract with Bonded Filter Company.
Be next agenda.
Item eleven is amendment number one to the contract with the Bridge for the Youth Facility Juvenile Court.
I, I, is, I, I mean, I didn't see a copy of the contract, it was just this addendum, and, but I'd, I'd really, I recall there was a provision in that contract that we placed in there for quarterly or semi-annual, some kind of reports on, on the work that was being done under that program, and I, I can't recall seeing one. We need, we need to make sure that they're doing that, a while back, there were some, some issues that were raised with that program, I, I know it's a much-needed program, and I just wanna make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and, uh, that the judges and the people that, that interact with them out there are, are on the same court with it.
Did the dollar amount change on this one?
No. The money comes straight from the, from the state and goes straight to them, we, we don't even, it's pass-through money.
So that'll be next agenda.
And if you'll note, um, there is a vacant, there are vacancies on the Joint Public Charity Hospital Board.
Did any one of the two that are, whose terms are expiring, did they express an interest in continuing?
We have not asked them, I'll be happy to follow up.
All right, 'cause if not, I have someone I think who would more than qualified and would love to, to provide services for that particular organization.
Do y'all, anybody know, Miss, uh, Wel, Wedler? Or Dr. Green McIntyre?
Dr. McIntyre's on that public hill.
So who's gonna reach out to the current board members?
We will, I will. Now we will hear from Felicia Petway with Legal Services.
Good morning, my name's Guy Lusko, I'm the Executive Director of Legal Services Alabama. With me this morning is Felicia Petway, the Director of Development. Well, thank you for inviting us to meet with you this morning. We're here to talk about our new building in downtown Montgomery. For those who drive down South Perry, uh, you too may have noticed at four twenty-eight South Perry, a building of which we had, through our board, uh, bought at their request to be closer to our clients, closer to the courts, and part of downtown Montgomery's resurgence. Uh, we are now, uh, two-thirds of the way through, and as many of your constituents, whom are our clients, have asked, when are you opening the building? We're opening the building when we can get the support from Montgomery County and others, that'll enable us to complete the build-out. For your information, we're here this morning to share with you, Montgomery County, uh, we cover all sixty-seven counties, uh, is the third highest recipient of our support, you know, throughout the state. Uh, in, uh, two years- recipient of our support throughout the state. And two years ago, we closed 13,672 cases with an outcome value of over $23 million. In Montgomery County alone, we closed 1,698 with an outcome value of $1,505,000. The value of the cases are based on the work we do in housing, elder law, consumer, domestic violence, individual rights, and public benefits, all of which are your constituents whom we serve. What we'd like to do is get a commitment from you, and I'll turn that over, because our chair at the present time of our Capitol Campaign is Reverend Leon Hampton from Beasley Allen Law Firm. Could not be here this morning, but to talk about our Capitol Campaign, I'll ask Felicia to bring you up to date.
Okay, so, if we respond places, please.
I think Guy really kind of summed up what I was getting ready to say, which was where we are with the Capitol Campaign. I would like to point out that we have been before the commission before. The last time we received funding from Montgomery County Commission was in 2021 during the eviction crisis. We did submit proposals for your ARPA funding through Levitate. We were not awarded funding then. I know there's been a big push for heirs property work within our organization, and so those numbers have all been encompassed in what the report, and I think all of you have our report, as well as the funding that we've received thus far, where we are currently with funding. We feel as, because we're in Montgomery, we're in a unique situation. Our corporate office is here that serves the entire state. Our technology center serves the entire state, but the Montgomery office, which is where we're here today to ask for support, is the office that supports the County of Montgomery. That is the office. We have eight regional offices throughout the state. One is in Montgomery. We're asking for support of $250,000, and that can be done over a period of time. You can allocate it within years. Some organizations, according to the list that I provided, have done pledges for multiple years, but we're here today to ask where we reside, where we work every day, where your constituents garner support, that you will support our organization and our building. One of the things that as we've met with the state and other organizations has been, well, what is the local Montgomery area doing to support our organization? We're not just asking for the commission, we're also going before the city council as well to ask support. Many of you I have spoken to, I've worked with individually within requests for your constituents, and so we're here today to answer any questions that you may have.
Just one right away. I'm looking at the financial snapshot in revenues, grant revenues, contributions, and other revenue. I don't, is there any federal funding? Do you receive federal funding?
We are largest funder is the Legal Service Corporation. They provide 70% of our funding. The remainder is from the private foundations or like the public state. We do not, we got a grant from the state for what we have been doing with the Department of Mental Health in providing eviction defense work.
And, and so, the feds don't provide funding for, for your building and supplies and things of that nature?
Our funding is based on the poverty population of a million eligible clients, and no, they are not providing any funding for the building.
Yeah, capital funding is, we have to generate that. All legal services organizations have to privately generate capital funding for the building. For the most part, services are pretty easy to write grants for. We have veteran grants. We have multiple grants. As Development Director, we manage about 60 grants. Very, none of them are capital funding. We have to do fundraising, get support from our local counties, municipalities, state organizations for capital funding.
Okay, then let me understand the other, one of the part. You're asking for $250,000 for, to complete construction?
Of the Montgomery building. The entire construction where we are now is $2 million. We are spreading that out throughout the entire state. As we mentioned, Attorney Leon Hampton is the chair, but we have in different pods throughout the state, we have other attorneys that are assisting us through, from Huntsville to Tuscaloosa, to build this out, to build out the rest of it. Yes, sir.
Okay, and this is one time?
Yeah, this is a one-time ask.
Because we, we have no intention, if we were to do something, we have no intention of permanently placing you in our budget. And when I read that letter, that was my understanding of the request.
It's a one-time.
And we're in no position, we're in no position to do that. We don't do it for public defenders, and we, the only, DA is in there, but the state mandates our support of them.
And you know, I'm glad you mentioned that, Attorney, because we've met with, with Bill Poole, who's also an attorney, the State Finance Director, and a lot of our legislators think that when they give the Indigent Defense Fund, that is, and I know you know this, that it also funds legal aid. It does not, because the services we provide are not criminal services. And of course, indigent services are just for criminal defense. So, civil legal aid is different. It's the housing, the evictions, the issues for our children and families. Yeah, I know, yeah.
I understand that, and I, I don't, I don't, you said you got some state grants, and that's, that's fine. I'm talking about the county.
Yes.
We provided a building for the defenders. That's it.
Yes.
You know, but I'm inclined to support, to support a one-time donation over time that would help complete the building. I've seen that building, and I've wondered, when is this thing going to be complete? You know, it's just sitting there, you know. Are you in it?
We're not, no.
I mean, it's just sitting there with, you know, paper all up. I don't know what that paper says. What does it say?
It's to prevent anybody from coming into the building, because then we would be liable for trespassing, et cetera.
Well, I mean, it's been sitting there forever, it looked like, and I think it needs to be completed. So, I'm inclined to try to help them, Mr. Chairman, and if, if, with support of other commissioners, to try to help them out of the joint, maybe an amount per year over a period.
Out of the joint?
Out of the joint annually, you know, a portion of it.
Yeah, but we have no guarantee that we'll get the joint money.
And that's, that'll be, that'll be, that'll be the commitment.
Year to year, we don't know.
That's why I'm telling them we couldn't put them in our budget, but we have funds that are available to us now that we can do that, but, and the commitment will be based on the availability of those funds, if we were to commit. I mean, this is just my suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I certainly support the work that you all do in legal services. I know that had not been for you all, a number of people would have lost their homes because they didn't have the necessary resources. Their home, they were taken on tax sales, even while they lived in the homes. And you all have been very, very, I think, instrumental in keeping people in their homes. You're dealing with a lot of heir property, which we concerned about because generational poverty, sometimes it's a result of heir property being lost. And so, we just appreciate all the work that you're doing. I see here where you got some statistical data that say a person without a lawyer stands around a 90% chance of losing their home. If they have a lawyer, it drops to about 4%. And so, I know it's important to have legal representation regardless of the circumstances that you might be faced with. If I could quote Bryan Stevenson, he said, "It's best to be rich and guilty as opposed to being poor and innocent." And so, we certainly appreciate what you all are doing, and I hope that we can do something. I thought maybe somehow Commissioner Harret was going to work it into the general fund budget, but he's restricted that, so hopefully we can do something.
Any other questions? Well, thank you all. Thank you for the information, and I want to, I'm good friends with Leon Hampton. I want to talk to Leon, too.
Okay, thank you.
And Ted Host.
Yes.
Well, thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, is anything else? Florence, it's 10:01. How about 10:05? Can we make it four minutes?
You know, you keep restricting these times.